Okay. Let's call the meeting to order. We'll use my watch. It says six o'clock. Um, would everyone stand and please, uh, join us as we say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Does anyone have anything that we should be adding to the agenda?
No.
I don't hear you. If not, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Brenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Uh, scheduled presenters, we've got our annual truth in taxation meeting this evening. Is anyone here for that purpose? Okay. Um, why don't you take this over? We still have some declarations or information we'd like to share.
Yes, yep. As part of the truth in taxation meeting here, I'll go through some information that, um, each of you are, are permed to every year during this meeting, but it'll be a good review for some of the new members and, uh, the public viewing tonight as well. And so this is our, uh, 2019 truth in taxation meeting, uh, for the payable, uh, 2021 school year. And truth in taxation is defined in Minnesota law and then requires that cities, counties, and school districts follow certain steps before adopting a tax levy for the following year. And it involves a lot of notifications, uh, which most of you are aware of because you probably received those notifications. The requirements of the truth in taxation public meeting is that they, we are to discuss the property, proposed property tax levy for taxes payable in 2020, and discuss information on the current budget. And the public must be given a reasonable amount of time to comment on a proposed property tax levy and budget to ask questions. Some points to remember that the revenue formulas are set by the state legislature except for voter-approved referendums. Local levy and state aid mix are set by the state legislature, and an increase in local taxes does not necessarily mean an increase in revenues for the local school district. The Cannon Falls School District budget, current year 2019, 2020. Uh, this is a fund accounting review for those of you that are, um, interested in UFRS. I know at least probably Josh is.
Very.
At this account, but these are all the different funds that the school has, the general fund being Fund One, and those are all the items that are part of Fund One. Fund Two is food service. Fund Three is community service. Fund Four is our debt service. I'm sorry, Fund Seven is our, Fund Four is community service. Fund Seven is debt service. Got ahead of myself there. Fund Nine is trust and agency for scholarships. OPEB is a part of Fund Twenty-Five, and OPEB Trust Debt Service is a part of Fund Forty-Seven. For the 2019-2020 budget overview, revenues from actual to budget and the percent change involved. And you can see those numbers there. We're at about a 1.27% increase in total revenue for this year projected. The general fund revenue. As you can see, most of our funding comes from the state aid, 22% from local sources and 1.6% from federal aid is where our revenue comes from. Budget expenditures. For 2019-2020 projected, we are showing a minus 1.09% projection in the overall budget. How are our general fund dollars spent? This is just a breakdown, um, of how the actual dollars are spent. And you'll see most of it is into sites and buildings and equipment, and then the next, or I'm sorry, the largest would be the, the regular instruction, and then the sites, buildings, and equipment coming in second. Expenditure budget. Salary and wages takes up over 50% of our budget. And then breaking down into employee benefits, and then also purchase services after that. Components of the projected general fund. That didn't turn out as well.
Didn't turn out too well.
No, it looks like it got a shrink a little bit. Um, but you'll see the unassigned, assigned, um, committed, and then the long-term facilities maintenance piece. Do you have those spread out, Josh, at all?
Yeah, I'm, uh, the print on it shows, so in your pack, hopefully it's got the numbers, uh, as they should be represented. But unassigned balance, $356,000. Assigned fund balance, uh, $375,000. Uh, committed for separation would be like your OPEB or severance, and then long-term facilities, about $8,000. That's just what's been designated or left over from the prior coming into fiscal year 20. Um, when we talk about general fund balance, um, really the number that I look for in terms of our percentage of, um, fund balance, we're looking at the unassigned because that really is what the district has, uh, kind of pretty clear to use as it sees fit. Uh, anything that's assigned or committed are designated for certain areas, whereas an unassigned would be able to be used at the district's discretion for whether it be, um, facilities, uh, negotiations for raises or benefits, that sort of thing. Uh, we were under 6% this last year, and when you look at just the unassigned balance, we're about 3% or just a shade or 3%. Uh, the school district's policy is to strive towards a goal of 8 to 12% in the unassigned.
Thank you. As far as the school district's levy is concerned, this is, uh, for 2019 payable 2021 school year and the fiscal year 21. So all three of those terms are, uh, meant to be synonymous, if you will, with each other when we get into terminology pieces. The authority for the school levies, um, school district tax levies are either set by the state formula or they are voter-approved, which would be our operating levies. Factors impacting tax change would be anything changing in the anticipated net tax capacity, uh, change in the rate structure of that, and then any laws mandating code compliance like health and safety and buildings. And then there's also issues determined by the district voters. You have your building bond issues and your excess levy, which is your operating levy. Local factors. Anything from inflationary pressure on real estate markets, abatements, property improvements not previously taxed, changes in the individual assessed market value. Possible change in property classification from homestead to rental would be the example of that. How were your 2020 school taxes spent? Uh, almost half of it will be coming, uh, and put into the general fund, and the rest is spread out. 47% of it is into the debt service as the secondary piece to that. All right, looking at the levy limitation and certification, 2019 payable 2020. They show the actual 18 pay 19 and the proposed 19 pay 20. Uh, the percent change that we're actually looking at here is, um, going down 9.24% from the previous tax cycle. The main variables that cause property tax decreases and increases is the change in market values, classification, property tax credits, voter-approved referendums, and increases or decreases in the levy amounts caused by changes in the state funding formula. So at this point, we are looking at a proposed levy for 19, or yeah, 19 pay 20. And for $3,961,040.29. When we get to the part of the agenda that calls for that, that will be the amount that we need to save for the resolution to set the amount. Other than that, that is all I have.
Questions or comments for the superintendent? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on. Reports and communication. Uh, no school board rep this evening. School board committee reports. Does anyone have anything for the cost? How's the, uh, how's negotiations going?
I was absent next week.
We're moving ahead.
Moving ahead.
Anything else you'd like to?
Moving ahead is a good, we're making progress. It's a good way to say that.
Okay. Anyone else have anything from committee?
At foundation, I don't believe we're meeting this month, but we'll be seeing their donations. I want to get to donations.
Donations.
What's that? What do they call it?
Just a little bit.
Oh, what's the, what do they call that?
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda.
Anyone else?
We Tech is meeting for a regular quarterly meeting on Thursday. I missed the transportation committee meeting, but Jeff and, Jeff, do you want, you, you can.
Sure.
I mean, I have my notes, but go ahead.
Yeah, we, we had a transportation committee meeting, and in a nutshell, we discussed the layout of the, the purchasing of buses over the next, um, I would say eight to 10 years, and what that looks like to try to work our way toward, uh, having a mixture or hybrid solution for purchasing buses and for leasing buses, uh, so that we can try to get off of leasing and save those leasing dollars and have something that makes sense, uh, for the district in the long run. Um, the other piece that we talked about was the, kind of a debate on, uh, going from diesel to gas buses over that period of time. That won't be an immediate change, but I think in the next couple of years, we will have that answer on which route that year according to head and so.
Um, administrative reports, elementary school. I would guess we would have, uh, some kind of handout there. Hand in.
Yep. Jennifer's on the go to make it tonight.
Okay.
But she does have a report, I believe.
Please refer to that elementary report that's, uh, on page nine. Moving forward, middle school, high school also has a printed report in here. Mr. Hodges, you have anything to add?
Nope. I was all there.
Just take a moment. You can read, and as long as we have Mr. Hodges here, if you have any questions directly related. Page 11 on there. Okay. Nothing else? Community Ed? I don't see anything there. Head of operations, nothing. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Uh, just a reminder that we have our organizational meeting, uh, for the new school, or for the new calendar year, I should say, on January 13th. Um, Lori and I have been working on that agenda as well, and, uh, the assigning of committees. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to talk about tonight is, I realize that we probably don't know who's going to be on the finance committee yet, but I do, I would like to set up a meeting for the week of January 20th with the next school year's budget coming up shortly thereafter. I'd like to have a finance committee meeting to discuss where we are at and where we are headed, uh, for that. So if I can get an agreeable date that works kind of for everybody without knowing who's on the, on the finance committee currently, uh, if that would work for that week, if there's better times than others for that.
You know, I know in the past, they've been set, um, before the workday, basically, within 7:00 AM meetings, as I recall.
And we, and we try to get local people involved with that, is my understanding as well. And so 7:00 AM works for people. That would be great.
I wonder if we should just set up a time. Really doesn't matter whatever we plug into, we should be able to have a time all set up and just go from there. Did you have a date picked out, did you say?
Just anytime in that week during the 20th, I believe, the 20th. And I'm okay with any of those days so far. Uh, if we can maybe stick to Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, would probably be the best.
Typically, for all of you with a 7:00 AM work, probably keep it to an hour, probably less, yeah, possibly less. Be able to have one for a while, so you'll get a little catch-up. Any dates that do not work for that week? So, I'm actually how old of town that week? That would not be a viable candidate.
Okay.
You can always, uh, you can always add the alternates if you need to, and just fill them depending on. Any, anybody have any corrigible dates besides Bill?
Can we tentatively set it for the 23rd?
What day of the week can I?
It's a Thursday.
Work for me?
Yep.
Set that for 7:00 AM. And if we get to that meeting on the 13th, and if that doesn't work for any reason, change it, I believe, a lot of time to be posted. And, um, reminder that the MSBA conference is coming up on January 14th through the 17th. I think we got everybody's, uh, what they are planning on doing as far as the phase trainings and, and the different places, and everybody has signed up, I believe, if that is correct, Lori?
Correct.
So that shouldn't be a problem. Uh, looking ahead a little bit to January and February, I know we talked at the last meeting to have our strategic plan, action plan in place, and then that will be plugged into our updated World Best Work, Workforce Document. And so we'll try to have that late January into February timeframe by the time our administration team puts that all together. And then we'll probably be also looking, our elementary dishwasher is really on the fritz, and that has been kind of a topic of conversation the past few years, and I do, I think we have, um, some options to look at purchasing one, um, and have it installed at the end of the school year. And so what we'd like to do is ask for permission at that time and that January, February timeframe to go out for quotes on that as well.
That's been a pain for a few years, hasn't it? Congratulations for keeping it up for so long.
Well, we're running short on baling wire and dirty tape right now, so that's probably the reason why we need to probably, uh, get that thing finalized, so.
So are you asking for anything in particular about just being prepared for?
No, we'll, we'll come back in January, February timeframe to ask to go out for quotes for that because we're not going to be able to replace it until later in the year anyway. So we just want to make sure that we're ready to, to replace it right when school ends. Other than that, that's all I have. Unless you have questions? Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward, public input. If anyone in the audience would like to speak to the school board about any particular items of concern, now is your opportunity. You have somewhere between three and five minutes to, uh, to give your opinions, ask some questions, or directly speak to the board. You ain't doing it, are you? You're here for your application or something, aren't you? Okay, moving on then. Consideration to approve the finance report.
Uh, so we page 15 on the agenda, and just kind of go through, the top there being the cash that's in the bank at, at present. Emergency bank account is essentially for our HSA benefit account for, uh, staff that receive the, uh, health savings account. Funds, and then the community resource is our main checking account. Uh, as that balance and merchants builds, we transfer it to the community resource if needed. And again, as we talked about, we monitor the collateral on the community resource bank account to make sure that we're within guidelines for audit. Uh, the first thing I guess to kind of note, most things in there are pretty standard. The, uh, payroll on the 15th and the 30th, the payroll taxing, that kind of thing on the 15th and the 30th of each month. Um, but the elementary roof there, uh, that is supposed to be, or is the final payment on the elementary roof lease. Um, we were able to pay that one up early, and when that roof was done, a bunch of the copper that was on that roof would be able to be recycled and reduced, or pay ahead on that. So, um, those funds have been designated from the inventory dollars, and we'll be looking, especially when we talk, uh, finance committee, what to do with those funds going forward. And, uh, I think the recommendation would be to try, keep them in facilities, uh, so that, uh, as needs arise, which they do in a, a district this large, uh, we have what it means to cover some of those expenses. Uh, bedwadown, you'll see a bus lease. Uh, Mr. Sanstrom talked about transportation meeting, talking about bus leasing versus purchase. Uh, the lease, it's kind of different in a school district. The lease actually is a purchase for us. It's just, uh, over five years, we pay off that bus. Uh, it's just a mechanism that the school district needs to use as a public entity. Um, what we're looking at, the transportation committee, is a mechanism to turn over all the buses every 15 years, um, and stay on the schedule, but to try to avoid some of the leasing or the interest costs of having to lease buses. So, uh, it may look something as much as purchase a bus every year and lease one every five years, and try to keep that budget consistent so that, uh, we can plan for each year and not have to have that potentially be one of those things that we balance the budget with. We just know that that's going to be in there. We, uh, can set, uh, the clock by it. Or we may look at it that we recycle every one of those 18 buses we have in our district every 15 years, which is kind of what our transportation, Andy Sanstrom has kind of said is the useful life of buses generally in our district. Uh, that payment, so that's, that'll be the last payment on that bus number nine. As you say, we'll, we'll own that after it's paid. Um, that was five years ago, at $18,000. Uh, now our, they go a little under $19,000 for a lease payment. So you're looking at about between $90,000 and $95,000 to lease a bus, whereas a straight-out purchase, uh, about $90,000. So you're saving a little bit of money that way, plus it's a lot less paperwork to do the lease and a lot less cost to do the lease. We have to do an opinion of council and do some legal work in order to lease the bus. Uh, then the, the kind of big and important thing here, about two-thirds of the way down, you see the 2017 A, 2017 B, 2016 A, and the OPEB. Those are all debt service payments. Um, you can consider those as like a mortgage payment. Uh, our payments are set up that in February, first part of February, that's the principal and interest payment on our debt. Uh, in August, then there's the interest-only payment. So, uh, in terms of cash, you see we have a pretty healthy cash balance in our account right now. About 1.6 million will go out the door, um, on that to make those mortgage payments, and our cash flow then will, uh, dip down obviously towards it. Uh, the good thing to note, in our district, we'll still be positive in the cash flow. Uh, no need for us to do any age anticipation borrowing for the district, which we had done, uh, now, a few years ago now. Um, but we're in a good standing that way. Uh, remember, cash balance is different than fund balance. While we have cash on hand to pay our day-to-day operations and, and bills that come up, uh, this fund balance is still what it is, which is, uh, under 6% total general fund balance. Um, that's what we have for the, uh, financial report for today. If you have anything to ask for questions or anything to clear up, I can do my best.
Josh, have we made any, um, headway on understanding the inventory payment and the cycle?
I just looked a little bit through the legal documents that we have, and it appears in auto, uh, actually caller where that did the work at the time to, to be, to verify. But it seems like after that 20 years, then they go back to where they're having to pay actual property taxes. Uh, so while we'll lose, uh, out on the city portion, and our portion that we're getting right now, about $300,000 a year, um, that's in lieu of the tax essentially, they'll be back on the, the tax rule section. Uh, like I said, I think we have about eight years left of that, and I'll verify with our lawyer how that was supposed to be presented, but I'm pretty sure that just switches over to another opinion of their property tax. And that could be a plus for my side. I don't know if the $300,000 we're getting is, uh, slightly more or less than what the actual cost would be.
OPEB?
Yep, so with the, uh, OPEB, this will be our last payment on that ten-year bond. Uh, it was a million-dollar bond, and we had kind of determined that we would, uh, offset the, we'd pull from the trust to coincide with the, that payment schedule. So, uh, that'll be all washed out and out now. And in the last sheet of contract negotiation, there was something that caused put in there, um, allows us to, you know, levy for OPEB costs. We were able to levy, um, not exactly $100,000 each year. It's based on the actual study and what they view as a, a cost to the district for, uh, other employment benefit costs, but it will help offset that $100,000 that we're going to be missing now out of that. So in terms of a levy, there really no change. Uh, we're not levying for the debt for that OPEB. Uh, we are levying now for that. So when one comes off the debt, one goes on to the general.
Other questions for John? The foundation wants to approve the finance report in coming. To, please. Motion by Bill.
Please second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the finance report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss a singular item, it can be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Before we go in too far, Jeff always likes to acknowledge our, um, acceptance of gifts, so I'll turn it to you.
Yes, I'll read off here from the list of gracious donations for this month. The first five are from the Cannon Falls Education Foundation for a document camera for fourth grade, vertical endeavors, field trip, an author visit, Bill Beckham fur trade presentation, and a bodyworks exhibit at the Science Museum. Thank you to the Ed Foundation for that donation. Uh, there is a $250 Gemini donation for Weibo. That, I do not know what that is.
We the people.
We the people.
We the people. Gotcha. That's the new guy. Um, and the final one is from the Cannon Falls Mat Rats Wrestling Club for a middle school coach. We do thank you to our donors for their donations.
Okay, the personnel items, you can take a moment just to review those, and any other questions you might have? And when you're ready, we could, a motion to adjourn, or to, not adjourn, yeah. Okay, any questions or concerns on the balance of the consent agenda? If not, I look for a motion. Moved by Bill.
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Any other questions? All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Old business. We continue to, uh, try to find a school board training and superintendent hiring process follow-up. Missed our last one. We had a, an ill presenter, I guess, for lack of better, and, uh, we tried to plug this in at least a couple of times since October. My personal opinion is some of these things we've done already, moving forward already. And, uh, part of our process in the hiring and part of our, uh, expenditures toward the hiring process included this follow-up. So on one hand, you know, if we're getting our total money's worth, we would continue on and try to schedule something. But we're, we're far in advance of, uh, you know, two months later, now three months later from our original time that we were looking for, so.
Yeah, we, I mean, we've done the strategic planning, so that covered some of this. But maybe not necessarily the more specific superintendent type of evaluation and the board goals. And I still think there's some benefits there.
I agree.
So with the MSBA cancellation, um, did they come back at all with a new schedule, possible dates for them?
No.
No? And so we're, we're going to try and start a date and then give it to them? Or?
We could do that, or?
Or we go to them and say, give us three or four dates, and, uh, we'll pick and choose. Because there was some health issue that we're not really sure what that led to.
Yeah, I would say that there.
What would you like to do? It's all fine with me. We can certainly schedule, we can certainly schedule that. It gets, gives us our money's worth, if you will. Do we ask Lori to make some contact with them and, uh, give us? Do we ask Lori to make some contact with them and give us a few dates and we can pick and choose from there?
I think so.
All right, with that?
Sure.
Sounds good.
Let's do that. So she can shoot us both dates out and we can respond what works best for us individually and see if we can come to an agreement on that. Lori, all good with you?
Yep.
I'm sure. New biz, consideration to approve the final levy certification payable fiscal year twenty.
This is the item from the presentation that we will need to pass before we leave tonight's meeting and we need to pass it for the amount of three million nine hundred and sixty-one thousand forty dollars and twenty-nine cents, unless you want to go under that, but I do not recommend that.
We always certify max just in case, don't we?
We certify max in September and then we can always go lower it, but I do not recommend that.
Never been done in my time.
If you want something to read off before the resolution, I can pull that back up.
Is that the resolution?
Is that a resolution?
Is it a resolution?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I don't see it as a resolution. Be resolved, well, okay, maybe it isn't. I see incorrect. We just need approval of this levy.
I move up to the.
A second.
Levy at three million nine sixty-one forty dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Okay, now a second.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor of the final levy certification, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the twenty twenty-one school calendar for publication.
This calendar has been merged now for a little over a year and then this is the final approval so that we can put it out onto our website and people can start planning for next year already. Very similar to this year's calendar, except for it does not have a spring break per the two-year rotation. My understanding, correct?
Sometimes we get into a, say, in-depth conversation on our calendar. Most times not, but sometimes. Looking at that, does anybody have any questions at all for Jeff or Tim concerning our calendar?
I think at this point, all parties have been involved in creating it, so.
Yes, there's many stakeholders at the table.
Right.
Questions.
And as you mentioned, we're in the alternate year without the spring break.
Mr. Hodges, what's the rationale behind every other year as opposed to not at all or every year?
That is a great question that I wish I had an answer to, but I don't really know. A lot of times, you know, a lot, I think the way the contract reads is we're supposed to, the administration presents calendars to the union and they get to give their opinion on things and it kind of seems like it's about fifty-fifty on doing a spring break than any given year. So this, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty, or yeah, next year's school calendar, just because of a late start, if we had a spring break, we would be, we'd be going in well into, into June. Because I think this is the calendar where we start the latest that we possibly can. So I think it's Tuesday, September eighth is the first day of school, so that just seems that's.
From six through twelve. Elementary doesn't start till the tenth.
Right, right, so.
Any comments, any questions? If not, I'd look for a motion either way on our school calendar.
I move to approve the calendar.
Moved by Anna for approval of the calendar.
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Other questions? All in favor of the school calendar for twenty twenty-one, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration to approve the Marion Teal Music Scholarship, one award of one thousand, one award of five hundred. It's on your very last page.
This has been an annual scholarship that has been given from outside of the organization during the scholarship giveout and the Marion Teal family and organization has asked us if we could bring this scholarship in-house and have us administrate this scholarship on a yearly basis and I would recommend that we do that. This has been a longstanding scholarship in the community.
So there are two scholarships, the first place and the second place.
Yep.
Okay. I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Anna. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Information items, as you can see what's upcoming, January is somewhat busy for us. We'll have our organizational meeting voting for officers. We've got our annual school board convention coming up as well, dishwasher quotes, world's best workforce plan doc. And anything else that you feel for the cause we should be discussing? Anyone have any additional information before we close? Anything that you'd like to add, subtract?
I heard good things about the library PTO event they had Saturday with Santa and cookie decorating and all that.
Well, it did.
Well, attended, yeah. Nice event.
Anna and I had an opportunity to take part in the band.
Oh, yeah. Fifth grade band concert, well, I was only there on fifth grade.
Yeah, I did, I did the next session. I'm very impressed with how they move people in and out in an orderly fashion. It was, it's an incredible process. I think Mr. Hodges was there as well, but I don't know how they do it, but they're organized and if you can keep junior high kids organized, that's pretty darn good.
Lots of practice.
Yeah, no doubt.
Anything else for the, for the cause? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Anna on the motion?
Okay, I'll second.
Brenda would like to second. Any other discussion? Like to wish everybody a merry, merry Christmas and hope your holiday goes well. All in favor of the term, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.